Okay, we're going to call this meeting to order of the Bellingham City Council Committee of the Whole. We have, I believe, eight items this afternoon in Committee of the Whole, but three of them are related to public access television. And we'll start with our first item. Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors Liaison Position. The Bellingham-Walking County Chamber of Commerce and Industry has formally requested a city council member to represent the council as a liaison and non-voting member on its Board of Directors. Maybe someone else has more history on this than I do, but I believe we used to have a liaison to the Chamber Board. Then it went away for a while, and now we're sensing that loss, and I think they sense it as well. So, we've been asked to, by Guy, President and CEO of the Chamber, we've been asked to designate a representative, sorry.
Ochio Grosso.
Ochio Grosso. Guy Ochio Grosso. Okay. So, we've been asked to designate somebody to serve on the Board. So, I guess we need to agree that we would like to have a liaison member on the Chamber Board, and then nominate and vote on a person to do that. Are there any, well, first I'll ask, yes, Jack?
Make a motion to establish a liaison position to the Chamber of Commerce.
A second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Michael was the second there. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes seven zero. And so, normally in our reorg meeting in January, we have a process we follow to designate people to be liaisons or board members in the community. I think we take up to three nominations. If there are three, those people can speak to their desire to serve, and then we would vote. So, I'll entertain some nominations. Jack?
I'll nominate Michael.
Okay. Okay.
Usually in the process, it doesn't necessarily require a nomination if somebody's interested. Usually they can just speak up.
Sure. Michael, are you, well, any other nominations? Okay, seeing none. Michael, are you interested in serving on this?
Yeah, I'd be happy to serve it out for the last six months of the year, and then we can consider reassigning it in January.
Okay, sounds good to me. So, did we have a, we have a nomination, but I guess.
I'd like to make a motion that we add Michael Liliquist to the Board of Directors Liaison Position for the Chamber of Commerce.
Second.
Thank you, Roxanne. And Jean, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of establishing Michael Liliquist as the liaison to the Bellingham and Walking County Chamber of Commerce and Industry, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion passes seven zero. Michael, congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item. Okay, authorization for the City of Bellingham to continue with the Army Street Property Owners Memorandum of Agreement process. The City of Bellingham entered into the Army Street Property Owners Memorandum of Agreement on December 3rd of last year. One of the parties to the MOA, the Thornburg Trust, gave notice on June 24th of this year that it is withdrawing from the MOA process pursuant to the Article 3(c) in the MOA. It shall terminate unless within 30 days following such a date, the remaining party is consent to continue with the process. The attached draft letter would provide notice of the city's consent to continue with the process as a property owner and party to the MOA. And I wasn't here last week, but I guess we had a presentation from the PDA, or two weeks ago, we had a presentation from the PDA about this, so you folks all are prepped, and I did watch it. So, Leslie, is there anything else you'd like to? Amy, I'm sorry. I'm just getting back in the swing of things.
Amy Cram, City Attorney's Office. I'm here in Peter's stead, and last week, as you recall, you asked Peter to come forward with the appropriate letter so that the MOA could continue, and that is attached in your packet. And so, if you wanted to move ahead with this, a motion could be made to send this letter, and then we would do that.
Okay, thank you. Michael?
Vote to approve the signing of this letter by the City Attorney to continue our involvement in the MOA.
Second.
Was that a second, Jean?
Yep.
Okay, great, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion passes seven zero.
Thanks, Leslie. I mean.
Apparently, I was thinking of Leslie. Okay, third item this afternoon is regarding a comment letter about rail impacts of the proposed Gateway Pacific Terminal. And so, we have an opportunity now to discuss and consider a draft comment letter that outlines the city's concerns with respect to rail impacts of the proposed Gateway Pacific Terminal. The city has previously submitted comments concerning off-site rail impacts that would be necessary for the project, and the city will request that additional steps be taken to ensure that the environmental impact statements evaluate the full scope of these impacts. So, a couple of weeks ago, we had asked Michael to make sure that all of our comments and ideas were conveyed to the administration to get into a letter, and so I'm assuming this is that letter. Okay, great. And so, Brian, would you like to share with us this afternoon?
Thank you, Brian Henrich, Mayor's Office. The letter that you'll find in your packet is a result of a number of iterations between Michael and myself as we crafted and made sure that it was reflective, what we hope anyway, is of the administration's viewpoint as well as council, as we continue to ask for the, if there are improvements, if the terminal is in place, and there are improvements, and there is a requirement that additional siding is required, that that is not a mitigated concern, that it's actually a part of the project. And back in May of '12, council and the mayor asked the county to address that at that time. Have not received an answer, and we, this is, again, that restates that question. I don't know if Michael had anything to add to that.
Yeah, Michael.
I don't have much to add, but just to get this started, I would move, well, I would say provide direction. If I move that we authorize the council president to sign this letter to send it to the county.
Second.
And the mayor, I believe, it will be a cosigner on the letter.
Okay, great, so it's a joint letter from the council and the mayor. Okay, and I'm sorry, I was distracted. That was a motion to authorize sending this letter, and a second from Roxanne. What is this amendment item, Michael?
Yeah, so I guess I would move to amend the letter. If you look, I provided some edits to the third paragraph over the weekend, and people provided some feedback that maybe the point in there wasn't clear, that we're talking about the fact that there is some rail capacity, and with some normal growth, you wouldn't need the siding. It's only if it goes beyond a certain point. So, I would ask the administration also to look over this. I just wrote this this weekend, and no one else has had a chance of seeing it until right now.
And I would second that change, that I did agree with.
Thank you.
Okay, so, yeah, Mayor Lynnville?
So, this wasn't something that was previously in the letter? This is a new addition to the letter?
Yeah, it's clarifying language to the letter, so it's not in the current draft. It's not in the draft that Ryan looked over.
Okay.
I would ask, Brian, have you had a chance to see this amendment?
I haven't, but just a quick read of it, I would, it appears to actually help clarify, so it doesn't raise any concern from my.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second on this amendment. Mayor?
And the only reason that I asked that is Peter Raffato did review the original letter, and he had made some edits that he thought, from the legal perspective, needed to be changed. And I just wanted to make sure that this wasn't anything being put back in.
No, this is, we actually made a number of those edits.
Already?
That's correct.
Yeah, they were already done.
Yeah, this does not revert back to that.
No.
Okay. Jack?
I just want to make sure that we're following proper etiquette and protocol for the administration, for the mayor. Do you want the motion, Mayor, to include direction from the council for you to also sign this, or are you?
It's already part of the letter, and I think we were doing it jointly, so I assume that that would be fine. If it comes from the city, then whoever wants to sign it can sign it. But, yeah, I think it would be good if it either included me, or it said the city will do a letter, however you want to word it.
Well, can we just do a quick amendment?
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, sure.
Okay, so we're going to vote on the amendment, which everyone has in writing here, and the administration is okay. So, any, speaking to the amendment? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of making these changes to the letter in paragraph three, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, these changes pass seven zero. Michael?
I would move to clarify on that motion to indicate that we are inviting and requesting the mayor to be a cosignor on the letter.
So, we have a motion to authorize sending this letter and inviting the mayor to be a cosigner on it. And with a second, is there any other discussion about this letter? Jack?
Just a small typo. On page three, third paragraph, fifth line, the word "being" should probably be "be." Do you see that, Brian?
I don't, I'm sorry, I don't, where are you at again?
Third, third page of the letter.
Mm-hmm.
Third paragraph, fifth line.
Oh, thank you.
Great, thank you. So, amended? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the letter to pass is seven zero. Thank you all very much. Thank you, Michael, for working on that.
Thank you, Terry.
Great letter. Okay, next item. Are you staying for the next item? Okay. Next item, well, it's three subsequent related items about public access television. Staff, at the recommendation of council's PEG Working Group, which I believe was Jean and Jack, will discuss a proposal to implement a public component on the city's existing BTB-10 platform, and I'll turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Brian Henrich, Mayor's Office. You'll see in the packet, there's a brief staff memo, and there are two additional agenda items, which are a resolution affirming BTB-10 as being able to be the public education and government television station, as well as an ordinance which increases some staff time from a .8 FTE to full-time to implement the P component of the station. So, as Kathy mentioned, there are three items, but for this first one, what we had talked about as a group with Jean and Jack is how we could, and this was really at the urging of the mayor, how we could move as quickly as possible to get the P component, what were the steps that we needed to take immediately to get P on BTB-10 as quickly as possible. And so, the memo addresses those first steps, which are, as already mentioned, the resolution and the ordinance. We will then, and staff are already working on this, assuming that this is the direction we're going, coming up with the technical criteria that we will need to share with the public so that they can submit us videos that are ready to play. And then, following that, those first steps, we will also be developing an RFP that we will put out to the community, and it's really the last paragraph of the memo, that we will contract with a provider who specializes in video production and make trainings available to the Bellingham residents who are interested in submitting video content. And I think on that point, I would just say that what we've articulated is that we are making space available for the public to submit content. We are not interested in regulating that content, or we don't have any criteria over that content. It is public access in, really, its purest form, and that's what we're trying to achieve right now. And I do have two additional things that weren't in the memo, but I wanted to draw attention to in terms of a timeline, is assuming this is the direction moving forward, during the week of September 8th, BTB-10 staff will make some informational sessions available to the public so that we can go through what are the technical criteria that's required to submit a video to BTB-10. We would then begin accepting video content beginning on Monday, September 15th. There is a delay, just in terms of how programming is set up. The first available slot that we would identify and be able to air programming is Sunday, October 5th, from, right now identified from 6:00 to 12:00, 6:00 PM to 12:00 AM. And I just threw a lot of information at you, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Jack?
So, when Jean and I met in the PEG Working Group with you and the mayor, it didn't sound like, what I don't recall is that we would be limiting this to one or two days a week for the six hours, but it was going to be like, I guess, more flexible, that it could be throughout the week if necessary, depending on how the scheduling is. But this seems to be putting more of a limitation on it, to say that it's going to just be one day a week, or two days a week.
Well, so, what we've tried, what we've wanted to do is be accommodating and flexible. Right now, assuming we can accept content on September 15th, staff have identified that first Sunday in October as when time could be available. Now, I think from our conversations, we always reserve the right to be flexible in how that is administered. And so, if there's a demand for more time, I'm reasonably sure we can be flexible in accommodating that. If the programming is not there, we also need to be flexible in the reverse. So, I think this is just the initial step. I don't know that it will stay that one night for six hours for the full year. It may change, and we would certainly want to communicate that, how that programming changes, but we think we have that ability.
Jack?
Well, the problem is, it's in black and white in this letter, and, you know, if it is a situation where it could be throughout the entire week, you wouldn't need that sentence at all. It would just be, you know, programming would be conducted as demand, you know, exists, something to that effect.
Mayor Kelly?
Yeah, I think the conversation that I remember having with you and Jean was that we would do six hours a week of public programming, the true P, public programming. And so, really, it means accommodating it into the weekly schedule. We're suggesting we start with this to see what the demand is, but we can change the schedule as often as the BTB schedule changes. We need to give some stability to the staff that's going to be changing the schedule and accepting the proposals, or the submissions. But I think we did agree it would be six hours a week to begin with. The pilot would be six hours a week.
Yeah, and that's fine. It's just that, to say that it's going to be a one or two days versus, you know, throughout the entire week, it was a limitation that I didn't think we really talked about in our working group. And it just, I was kind of surprised to see it here. And the other thing, too, while it's not in this letter, it's in the ordinance.
The resolution.
It's a resolution, in the resolution, is it says up to six hours. And to me, it seems like, you know, from what Jean and I, I think we're anticipating, was that it was going to be at least an average of six hours. It could be more, it could be less, depending on what the demand is, but to say up to, that would give the opportunity for the station to just say, well, we're going to cut it off at two hours a week, because it says so in the resolution, because it's an up to. And I'm concerned about the word "up to."
The commitment is to six hours a week. The only reason it says up to is based on the amount of submissions we would get. So, if nobody submitted anything, there wouldn't be anything to put on. We could put six hours of the same program on, so there would be six hours of programming, but I don't think anyone was thinking we would choose to have less than six, unless we didn't have the content.
Right. Okay, Terry, and then Michael?
With a six-hour limitation on it, if we start getting submissions of 12 hours, 15 hours, whatever, how will that selection be made? How will the decision be made as to what goes and what doesn't?
I don't think we've gotten down to exactly to those details yet, Terry, but it would have to be something that would allow everyone to have a chance to have their programming on. It could also be where we would come to the council and say, we have, there's so many submissions that we need to ask you in the pilot, because this was just the pilot, to see if we could get it started. We think we need to make a request for more, for more hours. Or if it gets completely full, then we might say, okay, this might be the time where we say we do need a separate channel, because the demand is so great. So, this is just for the pilot.
Okay, well, that's good to hear, but this made it kind of sound like we got six hours for this year period, and, yeah, so, just so it's very clear and it's laid out on the table, that if there is more good submissions and things, that it will come back to the council, and we will look at it again. That I can accept.
Michael?
Well, I do notice that the resolution is for a 12-month period, so I guess it does have to come back. I agree with Jack, I don't like the up to six hours, and it appears to be the intent is actually different. So, we're not on that item yet, but when we get to that item, I would suggest we get rid of the word "up to six hours" and say an average of six hours per week. I think that, because I don't want to set a limit, that six and a half hours is somehow violating the resolution, because that's not your intent. I'm concerned, this isn't the way I would have preferred to go, and so I still have some concerns, and I'd like to be able to improve this. I'm still worried about editorial separation, you know, between the city, and Terry raises a good point, if there's eight hours of submission, submittals, which two hours don't get shown. So, I would hope that we eventually adopt a procedure that's sort of like first come, first serve. First come, first served. I'll drink more coffee. First come, first served, so we don't have to be making editorial choices. So, people will get in line, and then they get shown when their turn comes up.
And I think that's the intent. So, we have 10 admissions the first week, and we put on the first six, and the next four are up next, and we kind of keep a running, a running list, so that we're not making a judgment about who's going to be on and who's not. Everybody will be able to be on, but they might not be on in that first week.
That is reassuring, because as I said all along, I would prefer that this would have been spun off more separately from the city, and part of it has to do with this editorial separation. So, anything we can do to create that separation, I will be pleased by. Kathy, I?
Can I just say also that James Urb has looked through all of this and been part of conversations, and he, as I, are very committed to no censorship, no nothing. If you're doing P, you need to do P right, or you don't call it P, you call it community or something else. And he feels very comfortable with the separation that we have built in here, that we are not going to review what comes in, where, you know, it's going to be on an ongoing basis, so we're not picking winners and losers when people submit things, and that, that probably, he believes that then that protects the cities from looking like any kind of a censor on a public channel, which we're not supposed to be.
Roxanne, and then Michael again.
With what you just said, Madam Mayor, one of the things that I hope that administration will be doing is doing substantial community outreach, because I don't want this to happen, and then all of a sudden, so many people are flipping through the channels, thinking, what is going on with BTB? So, I just hope we could do good media outreach, good BTB programming, you know, just advertising and things of that nature, just to try to get ahead of that to the best that we can.
Michael?
Thanks, Kathy. So, one of my other concerns about going this route had to do with, again, I wanted to have it be more separate. I was mindful of putting too much extra work on the staff. What's before us now is just one-fifth of the FTE, that doesn't sound like too much. But what I heard informally over the weekend, Jack mentioned this, and I want to understand if it's true or not, how much will we, in a certain sense, be, instead of having one station that's both doing the broadcasting and the content creation, what we're doing is we're opening up part of BTB-10 to do the broadcasting, but I'm going back to the content production. How much will we be using the PEG fees and the franchise fees to support production capabilities in the community? Not just opening up our hours, but actually providing resources for production capability that's outside of the city, you know, we're not doing it at all. Again, the separation, what are we doing with regard to that?
So, and I mentioned this just briefly, one of the things we want to do is develop an RFP that we will contract with, again, someone in the community to provide that training, and we are not.
In production.
Yeah, it'll, it's all related elements to, you know, the show production, whatever might be thought of in that regard, in terms of how someone can produce a video. So, we've not developed that RFP yet. We know we have some models and some guides, guidelines that we can use from existing efforts to put that RFP forward. That will come probably after we get the initial BTB-10 part set up, but we, again, it's a, we want to do that this fall. So, depending on the direction we go here today, we want to begin drafting that RFP and making sure that it meets what we want, is a training opportunity for the community so that they can produce the best possible content.
Okay, but it sounds like.
That makes sense.
That, whatever we, whoever responds to the request or proposal and is awarded, maybe one or two entities, I don't know.
Yeah.
They will not be in-house, they will be out of, out of the city house.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Michael, and then Jean. Jack, and then Jean.
Actually, Jean's had his hand up for a while.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Really?
Okay. I'm a patient man. You believe that?
So, you know, we're talking, we're talking about six hours, and one of the things is that, I mean, all of these programs aren't going to be one hour long. Some of them could be 30 minutes, 20 minutes, 10 minutes, 15 minutes, and so, there could be a multiple, you know, multiple programs from many, many different people that could take up that period of time. And the other thing that we talked about at the working group was that if any of this program is exceptional to the community, and we felt compelled to, that BTB-10 could take that material and re-air it, just like we go and do reruns of many other shows on the station. And so, that could be a very good thing, and also would, because the way we're setting this up is it's a one-time airing, and then, you know, it's done. And then, the last thing is that I note in here that, along with the production costs, we do have, the PEG fee is set up into two different brackets, one's for operational expenses, one's for capital expenses, and we had talked about the possibility of including in the RFP monies that would be available for field kits, you know, so that people could check out cameras and go out into the community to film, or to use studio time and have, you know, cameras there, too. And I understand that the RFP is going to be looking for somebody in the community that could, that might go and provide all of that equipment on their own, but I just want assurances from you that we would make the capital component of our PEG fee available if necessary to, depending on who actually gets the RFP. I know that you're going to be looking for the best response, so the best response would be somebody that has all of the equipment and be willing to go and lend it out, or to let somebody use it. But if our best response is somebody that has limited capital capabilities, that we would be, we would be able to backfill that with our PEG fee that's associated with capital equipment.
That's right, yeah. And we actually anticipate coming back to council in one of the August meetings with that request, on what that capital request might look like. We're still moving down that road, figuring out what does that look like, and we'll be coming back for your approval.
Good.
Okay, Jean?
I'm really excited about this. After kicking this around for a couple decades, we're finally at the point where we're going to start something. And I know it's not where everybody wants to be right now, but as the mayor said, it's a pilot project. We're going to see what we get. If we get 60 hours the first time, then we know what we're up against, then it'll come back to council, and we can have another channel. And it's a beginning, and I think the public should be happy about this. We're not in the business of censorship. Put it on, you want public access, we're going to have public access, and we'll see how it goes. And again, I think it's the beginning, it's not the end, but it's an exciting beginning for the community who has been talking for a long time about getting their say on television. So, I think it's a great start. I want to applaud the staff and working with Jack. I think we come up with a good first proposal. It is a pilot project, and nothing is set in stone. We can be very flexible as we go on, so I'm pretty excited about it.
Thanks, Jean. So, providing direction to staff was the request on this item. Is there anything else you need from us? Is there anything else you need from us before we move on to the resolution and the ordinance?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Okay, we'll go ahead and do that. Moving on to a resolution designating BTV-10 as a public access, education, and government channel for a 12-month trial period. This designation shall be limited to 12 months, beginning on the date the first public access program is aired. Terri?
A move approval of the ordinance.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Here come the wordsmithers now.
Michael?
A move to amend the resolution to replace the words "up to" "six" with "an average of six hours per week."
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend. I think this is the third sentence under, now therefore be it resolved.
Can I offer something real quick? Our concern is that, again, pilot project, starting off, if we don't achieve, if we don't have enough programming to achieve the average, that was the rationale for "up to," knowing that we could, we will and could come back, again, depending on demand for the service, we could come back and revisit that after a period of time. I just-
I hear you.
I think we could, well, go ahead.
I had made a note here, submissions allowing, like if we have enough content, we could average six hours a week. Jack?
Could we just say, "If demand exists, comma, the city shall set aside an average..." Yeah. "If supply exists."
Would that alleviate staff's concern?
That should be fine.
Okay, so the changes would then be, "If supply exists, the city shall set aside an average of six hours per week," correct?
Asking the maker of the motion if that's okay. I mean, we kind of is-
We have two amendments to the motion here that are happening at the same time.
I will second that amendment to the amendment.
And Kathy?
Yes?
We haven't had a chance to talk, obviously to Marty, about if there's some technical reason why that is or isn't okay, because it seems logical to me, or it seems fine. So if there is any concern, we'll bring it back this evening.
Okay, great. Okay, so we're going to vote on the amendment to this language, which will change it to say, "If supply exists, the city shall set aside an average of six hours per week for public access programming on days to be determined." Any further discussion on these amendments? Jack?
Well, on the amendments, or on the resolution?
On the amendments. There are two in this one that we're doing. Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the changes passes, changes pass 6-0 with Vargas out of the room. Okay, anything else? Jack? Oh, sorry, Alan?
Yeah, Alan Mariner, City Attorney's Office. Peter Raffaudo, the city attorney, asked me to just raise this issue. I don't think it requires amendment, but where in the resolution it says, "The city shall exercise no editorial control over public access programming." Further on, it says, "The city shall adopt policies and procedures related to public access." There would have to be some nominal policies that would be recognizing we need to be content neutral. There would be certain things that we would not accept as being appropriate to put on public television. So I just want to make sure that that's, we're all on the same page. Content neutral doesn't mean necessarily that anything under the sun goes.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Jack?
I just wanted to find out from the mayor. Mayor?
I'm sorry, I was just trying to figure out what would-
Okay.
Illegal things.
Alan said later.
So I just want to understand the intent, because at the time that we had talked in the, not at the last PEG working group, but the one, I think, before, was we were talking about a pilot that would, that would go to the end of this year. This proposal is a pilot that's going to go for 12 months. What's your understanding, what are your think, what is your thinking about if we decide to pull the trigger for either expanding, or contracting, or doing something else prior to the 12-month?
If there is justification for doing something else, and it's not into the 10th month, let's just say, but within three months, we figure out, by the end of the year, we figure out, we could go nine more months, but we know the demand is greater, then we can always bring it up again. Our problem will be if we have an RFP out there with somebody, we have to be mindful of that as we move forward. But I don't think there's any, on my part at least, to prevent things from changing, if it makes sense. It's just not having them change every month, or not, you know, giving us a chance to establish the process that we're using, and then we can make it longer or shorter, or we can do a lot of things with that. So I don't know if the 12 months is in stone, barring any contracts or things like that, but we also have to know that it's hard to change it quickly. We need to have a commitment that for a year, we're going to try to do this, and if it warrants changing it, then we can change it. There's nothing that prohibits us from changing it, as far as I know.
Is there a possibility that we can write into both the RFP and the contract that would provide a good flexibility of expansion and contraction, depending on what our needs are?
I think, based on what our needs are, we could probably do that, but I'll leave that up to the attorney who's been working on this, unless Alan wants to weigh in, but I think that that would be legal, could let you know for sure exactly how that would work, not me.
Okay.
Okay, I have two quick questions. The second to the last sentence, "The city shall adopt policies and procedures related to public access scheduling and programming prior to airing any content submitted by the public." I'm assuming that's where we would specify things like first come, first in line for airing. Okay.
Yes.
And then also, I wonder, it says we shall, we will adopt these prior to airing any content, but I wonder if we need to adopt that prior to soliciting content?
It's a good question. I think, just related back to what Alan had mentioned a moment ago, is what we are articulating, we would have at least three council meetings before, in fact, four council meetings before we would air any programming. So I think, I think we feel like there's time, and we will certainly, if this is the direction we're going, we'll make sure that council has sufficient review of those before we go down that road.
Great. I just want to make sure we don't, you know, take people by surprise after they put effort into creating content.
I think the-
Me, too.
Yeah.
I was just going to offer the informational session, so just assuming we can do the policies on September 8th, the informational sessions that we're going to offer that week-
Okay.
Would obviously reflect those policies.
Thank you. Okay, is there anything else before we vote on this amended resolution? Seeing none. I'm going to clarify that we are voting on a resolution designating BTV-10 as a public access, educational, and government channel for a 12-month trial period. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 7-0. And now the next item, also related, it's an ordinance appropriating funds from the estimated ending restricted reserve in the Public Education and Government Access Television Fund to increase one part-time position in the Information Technology Services Department to full-time. This is a, so staff request at council's direction an increase in PEG funds to increase the part-time television production assistance position in the Government and Educational Access TV Group to a full-time position in anticipation of additional work related to public access programming and scheduling.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Jack?
Since IT's not here, I guess I'm going to ask you, Brian. What specifically would this increase of FTE consist of? Because I'm looking at it as like eight additional hours to cover six programming hours.
It's a good question. There's programming implications. If we want to do some informational sessions, there's staff time that'll be related to that. So it really, just so we can accommodate the demands of the existing BTV-10, knowing that we're going to add some additional hours, so we have the staff to accommodate that.
And it's just going to kind of float. Because, I mean, I can understand there's a start of a cost to inform people and to come up with, you know, as Roxanne was talking about, to come up with, you know, the various educational-
We're going to ask for more, you know, we have to develop the RFP, that RFP will have to be managed with subcontractors who are helping, you know, for the trainings down the road. I mean, I think there's, there'll be plenty of work to accommodate that.
Well, are you looking at this as being an ongoing increase of FTE?
I think the two-tenths is an ongoing increase, to be able to do whatever it takes for accommodation of new programming, and making sure that that comes on in a timely fashion, and rearranging the schedule, and there's a lot of things that that two-tenths is going to cover. Now, if we decide to go full bore, it may take more people to do that. But right now, I think that IT believes they can do it with two-tenths of a person.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the ordinance in front of us, appropriating funds from the estimated ending restricted reserve in the PEG Television Fund to increase one part-time position. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Great, thank you very much.
Maybe I can do the Roxanne Murphy Show. And if I guess.
Maybe you can. Okay. Our two remaining items are information-only this afternoon. The first one is a review of financial guidelines and facility task force recommendations. Staff will present a review and summary of previously adopted council actions that guide the administration in development of the city's budget.
I'm going to start, Kathy.
Turn it over to Ma Kelly. Yes, please.
You might be wondering why we're doing this again, and I think Michael wondered why. One of the things that seemed very clear to me during our budget process last year, which I did think went rather well, is making sure that it's very clear how the administration is, how and why the administration is proposing what they do. And one of the things that we have in place are some really good work that happened prior to my time, that has been adopted by the council. And so I am very interested in having, to be able to have a discussion about these previous policies, so that, and give us, give you updated financial information, which Brian has for you today, too, to kind of keep us all informed about how our finances are doing as we proceed, so that if we want to keep our policies the way they are, we can. If there's something the council may want to change, you'll have an opportunity to do that before we get to the final budget adoptions. That's this budget adoption is for the next two years. So that's why we're doing this, and I think it's also helpful for the public to understand what is our financial position, what are the constraints or the guidelines for making decisions, you know, how do we do that, those kinds of things. For me, I thought it was important, both for the public and to see if we're happy with what the guidelines are, because I keep putting them in my budgets, and I do it because I want to value what you've already done, but if there's something we should change, I'm happy to do that, too. So I just want to know what the guidelines are.
That's great. I appreciate you bringing this forward, and I think it's especially useful for myself and some of the newer council members who haven't been through many iterations of budgeting.
Well, that's what I thought, too, because Pinky and Roxanne especially, I mean, you've been here, Terri's been here, he probably voted on most of this stuff, as did Gene. Nope.
No, I sat on, I sat on the task force.
Well, that's what I'm saying. So you know it very well, and Gene probably knows it very well, and these two people over here do, too, but not everybody has your level of expertise and knowledge about it. So I'm hoping it's helpful for all of us. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Brian Hinshaw, Finance Department. As the mayor said, we're going to have a series of presentations over the next several council meetings. The first one is a review, as Terri mentioned. Both of these were done in 2010. The financial guidelines were adopted by resolution by council in 2010, and the Facilities Task Force also met and gave a report in 2010. In general, I just want to present the summary and overview. It's a foundation, it's a discussion. Please stop me and ask questions as we go, but it's all leading up to the budget that's going to be taking place in October of this year. The financial guidelines were adopted in the spring of 2010. They start out with the stewardship of public funds as one of the primary responsibilities given to the elected officials. And then what I find very important is the second part here is financial policies enable city officials to manage the city's resources in a prudent manner that meets its current obligations while planning for future financial needs. The financial philosophy that was adopted was to sustain essential services, maintain reserves. This was very important in 2009, when we had a recession. We've been spending down reserves ever since then. We ensure timely payments of all fiscal obligations. We meet all debt covenants, and those two are very important when we go to issue debt. So bond analysts that give us a rating, and also the people that buy our bonds are looking to make sure that we do that. So that is a very important thing to maintain and lower our future costs for borrowing. And also we do to maintain financial standards and benchmarks. Financial policies set up tiers. These were the priorities to ensure public safety is a tier one, meet legal and mandated obligations. And then we had a tier two, which was to provide for costs of general government, maintain existing assets and infrastructure, and provide for operating city amenities and programs. And then when we had enough money to do tier one and two-tier, that's when we had tier three, which was invest in new assets, amenities, or programs. The financial guidelines need to consider both long and short-term costs. This is important when we're talking about capital expenditures. Oftentimes, those come with ongoing operational costs, and those need to be brought into the discussions as we're planning for the capital costs. Another thing we set out for a guideline was to not use one-time revenues to fund ongoing costs. This would be if we had, all of a sudden, we got grant revenue, which also is number three on here, is to carefully examine grants to make sure that we can continue the commitment after the grants stop. So oftentimes, grants will only pay for two years, and that we're obligated to continue on with that program or those personnel after those two years, and we need to make sure that we're able to absorb those ongoing operational costs out into the future. Financial guidelines also established fund reserves. We have both minimum targets and, minimums and targets for those reserves. We have specific directions that if we don't meet the minimum targets and they fall below those, that the mayor and staff will present a plan to get them back up to that reserve target. And then we also want to use debt prudently and in careful consideration with ongoing future payments. And I'll come back to this in a minute. You've all seen this chart before. Up here on this side of the graph, this is the general fund revenues and expenditures. This is since the recession in 2009. You can see expenditures have outpaced our revenues here. And down here, on the other side is the graph, is the general fund reserve. So you see, when we hit the recession in 2009, we had about $16, $17 million. That has slowly eroded over time as the expenditures have outpaced revenues. And this line is 12% of the general fund, operational. So right now, it's about $8.4 million. We are currently above that, and we have a little room here, but this number continues to go up. It's based on the current year operations, so as the general fund budget increases, our target increases. And this is where we have both a minimum target of $5 million in the general fund and a higher target of 12%. Once it falls below 12%, the guidelines specify what the mayor and staff will do, and then it'll come back to council. And we need to actually have a plan to get it back up to that minimum target amount. Graphically, this kind of just summarizes all of the main points of the financial guidelines. In times of rising revenues, slightly rising revenues will maintain service levels, or in slightly declining, lower service levels, steeply rising revenues, we will meet long-term commitments and increase service levels. Better stop here. commitments and increase, increase service levels. Better stop here. And right now, we're in between these two categories, okay? Next meeting on the fourth, I'll be doing the six-month revenue, the first six months of the year. We are basically flat right now, and we're showing declines in certain revenues, but flat overall. So we're someplace between these two. So slightly a conservative outlook today. Any questions on that before I go into debt? There are some, okay. So debt capacity, there's a legal statute amount that we can issue. General obligation is city-backed by all the city revenues, taxing authority. We can do one, one-and-a-half percent of assessed value for non-voted and another one percent of assessed value for voted. So our debt capacity by legal statute is about two-hundred million dollars. So we do have capacity. But I would liken that to if you went and qualified for a new car loan, and you got a new car loan, and you qualified, but then you got the car home, and you couldn't afford your insurance or your gas. There's a limit to what you can actually afford. Cash flow of our current revenues doesn't support that two-hundred million dollars. So statutorily, we have that capacity, but we don't have a way to pay for it. So right now, we are very conservative in our debt, which is a good thing. And then the other type of bonds that we issue are revenue bonds. These are supported slowly, solely by pledged revenues. So these are in the Public Works Department. Water and Sewer is where we have the most of these. And we're looking at best practices and also debt coverage. So most of our bonds require one-point-two-five times of actual cash flow. So for every dollar of debt, we need a dollar twenty-five of cash flow to pay for it. Our financial policies require us to maintain two, and I just calculated them for 2013, and we're just over three percent right now for water and sewer. So that's another good sign. Our, our management and also our reserves and all of our policies are reflected in our ratings. Both Moody's and Standard and Poor's have given us ratings on our bonds that we issued. Currently, we have an AA-plus from Standard and Poor's, and then a like or similar one for revenue bonds is an A-two. They're comparable, they just have their own standards. General obligation debt, we have twenty-six-point-seven million dollars outstanding currently. Seven-point-seven million of this was done on the behalf of the public facilities.
Brian, does that count the water treatment plant?
No, that, that'll be under revenue bond, so that, that's next. So how does that look cash-flow-wise? These are all of the bonds on this graph of the general obligation. So you can see that they're layered out. This bottom one is the 2005 solid waste ones that we used to purchase and also pre-fund some of the remediation down on the waterfront. You'll notice here that it's backloaded. All of the debt, the principal payments are in the last three or four years here. We did basically interest only, and then they're stacked in the back. That's something that we, I personally don't want to see us do again. It really puts all the financial strain at the back of it. The PFD debt was also done this way, which is part of the problem of why we're not going to be able to meet all of the debt requirements for the PFD, and I'll talk about that later, too. Yeah.
Brian, is there, is there any prepayment penalty on those bonds if we wanted to go in advance, accelerate the payments on that, if you're trying to?
That's a good question. These, there's usually a ten-year period before you can refund. So these are coming up in 2015 or 16, but it all depends on interest rates, and I'll talk a little bit about that. That's what the 2012 refunding was. So this last one that we did in 2012, we refunded, just like you refinance your house. We got lower interest rates for the existing debt. These were 2004, 2006, and 2008 bonds, and so they had met their criteria, and then we also did it. It's called a pre-funding. So we did it in 14, even though 16 would have been the normal year that you could do that. So it's a financing mechanism that we use to take advantage of the low rates. These are getting close. I started talking to underwriters about maybe doing that. There's some other considerations here as far as upcoming remediation debt that we might need, so it's part of the discussion. But you see, we've just tried to level this out. This is up at two-and-a-half million dollars per year for the next five years, and then it drops down. We're trying to keep a level debt service and not a backloaded one. This one in the middle is the QECB bonds. That's what we use to do a lot of the energy conservation projects. It's six-point-five million dollars that we did citywide projects to make energy conservation projects. So and this would be on that, on the general obligation side. The other bonds that we have are the revenue bonds from Public Works. Water and Sewer bonds are backed in parity, which means that we've used those two combined, even though they're separate utilities. The bonding debt is for both of those. We specify the projects in each issuance. Currently, we have seventy-point-eight million dollars outstanding. Most of this went just into the wastewater treatment plant, but that is also paying for a couple of other revenue projects. And in addition, the watershed, we took out a five-million-dollar line of credit for watershed acquisition. There's two-point-seven million that we borrowed against that five-million dollars currently. So when we put that on a graph, you'll see all the bonds here. We have, still, we have bonds. These are just about going to be paid off, 2004, 2006, 2008. The 2011 was the first big wastewater treatment plant. The 2012 refunding will actually replace all of these after the 2014 payment here. It's the last year of those, which is good. And then we also did the last one. A change here was that, this was a very big project, the biggest project that the city has undertaken so far, and up until this time, we had tried to maintain our, our debt lengths at twenty years. This is a thirty-year bond. So this goes all the way out to 2043, and you'll see that we're paying four million or more per year, every single year out to 2043, and that's just existing debt. In the rate structure study that was done, we're anticipating more debt. So it was going to be next year in 2015. Ted and I were talking, they're going to try to push that back into 2016, but this is, again, only existing debt. So there is other projects, other anticipated things in the Public Works work plan that is going to take debt already in the works. Everybody on track with that? Okay. In addition, the last year and a half or so, there's kind of been a change. Department of Ecology is switching. I don't know if it's intentional or if that's the way the money is, but they've done grants that turn into loans if we meet certain criteria. So we have now taken out, there's about six different ones. We have daylighting, Patton Creek Daylighting, Squallam Creek, one and two, and these are grants and loans. And I, I wanted to show them to you because they actually have, they're very good interest rates, so it's a good business decision. They're either point-five up to two percent, so between that, which is a very good rate. But we are committing and have already committed to these payments out to 2035. So you'll see in the next seventeen through twenty-three, this goes all the way up to nine-hundred thousand, but then it becomes much more manageable down here at about two-hundred thousand. So this is a new funding mechanism in addition to the bonds that we've done, that we need to be aware of. Now I'm going to switch gears a little bit. This goes more on to what the Capital Facilities Task Force met on. So is there any questions about the debt or anything that I've covered so far? Needs to be a discussion. Come on. All right. Michael?
This isn't directly related to the debt issue, but one of the financial guideline principles is not accepting limited-term dollars for ongoing need. I would suggest there's a, there is a version of that which may be appropriate. For example, we accepted a half-million-dollar grant to get the homeowner improvement going on Lake Watacom, and that grant has run out. And the reason why I consider that still an appropriate move is only because I believe that now that grant has run out, we should step up with city funds. So I can imagine accepting limited-term dollars is appropriate, but only if you plan on then taking over when those limited-term dollars end, you know, you treat that as a startup mechanism. Then I, then I think it's not an inappropriate thing to do. But it would be inappropriate if you accepted them and then didn't have a plan for what to do when those dollars ended.
One of the, one of the differences is the difference between using dollars for ongoing capital, like we can continue to acquire property. But the difference for, for me is, are we buying people with that? Are we obligating ourselves to hire employees with the, with the one-time funds or the, the grant funds? This happened in fire, and we had gotten grants that were supposed to take over to have a certain level of firefighter, and that we didn't have the money to keep those firefighters going as we went forward. So I think the difference, Michael, is not necessarily the program like you're talking about. I agree with you. I think that is a good use of those grant monies. But it's the things that are ongoing operating costs that I believe we need to be very cautious with when we look at one-time money, because we don't know if we can afford that. If we couldn't afford the watershed grants, even though we need to do it, then we could make a different choice about that. We could wait. Not that we want to, Michael, we don't want to.
Right. I think we're more or less agreeing. I'm just saying limited-term dollars do make sense, but only if you have a plan for what happens at the end.
And I think that's the important thing. That's what you said. There needs to be a conscious decision and understanding of what we're committing to, and then have an exit strategy. And you call it a plan. We just need to know what's going to happen at the end, so we don't get to the end and say, now what? So.
I think that's what you're trying to avoid, is that cliff.
And my goal out of this is, is to get a comprehensive understanding of all of the needs in the city, not just when you guys have one thing in front of you at a topic. So you're just talking about that program you mentioned. It still is in the context. I mean, that's to the, the water fund specifically, but it's still part of the city, and all of it works together, and we need to understand that. So back in late 2009, when the recession hit, then Mayor Pike and council asked for a citizen group to be formed that would look at the Capital Facilities Task Force. They started meeting in February 2010, and this is the one time where I'll say that there was a concerted effort for eight months, seventeen meetings. We met, there was eleven citizens, two council members, and some alternatives that made it to most of those. But we started with all of the city programs, all of the city requirements. We went through, departments came in and presented their capital plans, their capital needs. And it was a time for them to look at the entire city, instead of one board that's just interested in that particular item. They had to look at the whole city and then make decisions from that. The two main questions were what facilities do we need the most, and how are we going to pay for them? We started looking at the long-term horizons. The, the longest one we have is our legacies. It's a twenty-to-fifty-year horizon. It shouldn't be changing year to year. It's out there, we all know it. Those are the important things. The next one there is waterfront planning. And then we have a, a number of twenty-year planning horizons. Most of these are required. So we update them every five or six years, the comprehensive plan, the sewer plan. All of these happen. We're continually making them new. We're continually updating them, trying to make sure that they inform each other, don't conflict, updating them. As things change, they change. And we also have a five-to-six-year planning horizon for parks and recreation open space, Lake Watacom management plan, which we'll be talking about shortly, and transportation improvement plan. All of those are part of a six-year rolling capital facilities plan. So this used to be updated annually. We are now on a biennial budget, so this will be updated every two years. But this is what we need to inform those other longer-term plans. We need to make sure that we're doing today what's going to help on this five-year horizon and the twenty-year horizon. So we need to prioritize citywide capital requests. They need to include operating cost impacts. It's a two-year biennial budget now, so that two years needs to be fully funded. We can't start projects and not have a plan, like Michael said. We need to understand that fully. It by law amends the comprehensive plan. It must be in compliance with the state, and there's a lot of things that we do with planning to make sure that we're in law, in compliance with the state legislations. And then we also have to adhere to any of the state and local transportation benefit, but also Greenways, growth management, any of your policies, all of those have to be integrated into that capital facilities plan. Yes?
Up here says capital facilities plan. Is, is that, or is that not the same as our capital budget? How are those the same or different?
Well, the capital facilities plan is a six-year plan, and it's amended every single year by the budget. So the budget was a one-year budget, now it's a biennial budget. So those two years are the first two years of the six, but you are adopting a six-year capital facilities plan. The first two years will be funded. The last four years are going to be a rolling budget, so they will be updated, and they don't have to be fully funded in the current biennium, but they need to be funded in the out years. And it, it's just the best plan that we have today, and it's certainly going to be changed next year when we're doing it again and the year after that.
So technically speaking, when we adopt that two-year capital budget, we are, in effect, amending and rolling forward the capital facilities plan?
Correct.
Thank you.
Brian?
Yes.
How do we apply some of these values and, you know, tiers and priorities and all the things you've been going through to decisions we make with TBD and Greenways in, in terms of like not using one-time dollars for ongoing expenses? I mean, we've been having discussions about how to, just how to kind of transition with TBD if that isn't renewed. And of course, Greenways, we keep acquiring, and then we have to maintain. Any thoughts there?
Yeah. Well, I think that's why I'm laying this out, because those are the, the questions, and those are the discussions that need to happen, and they don't always happen because they're done, again, in isolation. So if you're just talking about a park, you're talking about what that is. But it has to be part of the bigger conversation, which is all of these have to fit and work together. And there is less and less capacity in all of our funds to absorb or change. We've done all that for the last five years, and that's why we're, we're having this conversation today, is that we've been able to maintain a lot of our levels of service. We had minimal impact when the recession hit in those years. But we've also done all of those budgetary things and allocations that are allowable by, by law, and also that you've allowed by policy. We've modified a few policies under Mayor Kelly's direction and your approval. It needs to continue. One, you know, if, I think too often we say, well, it's in the plan, we have to do it. Well, no one forecasted the recession of 2009. So we have to adjust, we have to adopt. And just because in 2008, everything was going like this, and we had four million dollars of REIT, and we thought it would never end, and now we're down to two million dollars of REIT, we have to adjust for that. Something has to go. We have to push projects back, not do as many projects, reprioritize. And that's really what the discussion is about for the next several meetings and then into the budget.
Thank you.
So let's see. I also wanted to just bring up, it came up last fall when we were doing the capital budget. We look at capital budget now with a hard definition of what a capital project is. There's a lot of definitions based on accounting or dollar size, but we're trying to show all of the major things that we think policy-wise, council, or the public is interested in. To be transparent, we include minor repairs, and, and that happens in the facilities fund, 530. We do major repairs. It includes equipment, the fleet equipment. We also talk about, you know, major projects like the wastewater treatment plan or street repaving. So we, we try to do the broadest terminology possible. You see as many of the projects as you can during that time, and hopefully that gives you the broadest context to make these decisions. So last month, we received all the department's capital requests. You'll see over the next six years, it's a great big number, almost five-hundred million dollars. We obviously need to spend time now prioritizing these, coming up with a plan, both in each department on what the priorities are, what the administration's priorities are and council's priorities, but also then as a city, what can we really afford to do out of our existing revenue streams? And if we don't have the revenue, how are we going to pay for them, which is a whole nother conversation. The capital request by department, we also have them by fund. You'll see in the general fund, eight-point-eight million dollars. The general fund has been running a deficit, so that number is going to have to have a different revenue source. REIT, you'll see REIT. I said we get about two, two-point-one million dollars of REIT. We have four million dollars plus in REIT requests. So it's a constant shuffling of projects and priorities. We don't have enough money to go around, so we need to prioritize the projects and what we're going to do in there. You'll see very big numbers. All this under facilities. This is all the capital maintenance that they've identified, that we've been deferring on all of our thirty facilities. These are huge numbers right here. So, and that goes into our, our facilities plan and how we're going to relocate people, what buildings we need to do away with, what buildings we need to update on. So it all leads into bigger conversations. Other funding needs. This is my favorite one, environmental remediation. We have about thirty million dollars of unfunded remediation down on the waterfront. We hope to have that cut in half with state MOTCA funds. Annual maintenance, this is just an annual amount. This is not what we're spending. This is what we should be spending. Annual maintenance, this is just an annual amount. This is not what we're spending. This is what we should be spending. The PFD debt is the debt service that the city is backstopping, the debt service for the PFD. It was based on sales tax growth of 4.5% every single year. We had a recession. Our forecast now in 2019 is that we will have to start supplementing that from another source. The main source right now would be the general fund. Fire and police pension, this is the unfunded liability for the left members. It pays for both their pension, long-term care, and their medical health care. We are paying this down. We're better than a lot of cities, but we still have a big number here yet to pay. And the waterfront infrastructure, this is the unidentified needs of the waterfront infrastructure.
No, that's, I'm... It's not funny. It's, I'm remembering why I passed out in John Garter's office my first year, seeing all this for the first time.
So after all that, I know it doesn't always make like the best news, but as Michael stopped me before, if you read the capital facilities task force plan, actually, there are things that we have done and are doing. So we often forget what we're doing, how much is all going on on a daily basis. But the city is already in three major initiatives: the waterfront infrastructure, Lake Wacom, and wastewater treatment plant. The wastewater treatment plant, we just finished that up, just had the ribbon served. Very large project. I mean, that in itself is a very big project for the city of Bellingham. The other two are just starting. Lake Wacom is a long-term project, and so is the waterfront. It is a big financial obligation, but it's manageable if we're conservative and plan for it. But it's things that we need to be aware of today because they are out there, and there are commitments that we've already started on. The capital task force, it was just during the recession, so their immediate reaction was that there isn't revenue streams to meet all of the requirements that we have currently. So they took a different prioritization is essential, deeper analysis is required, and we should develop and spend more time on the long-term funding plan. So instead of coming up with a list of just capital projects that they say, go do, they spent the time and they came up with principles to apply when we were able to do capital projects again. And we've continued, actually, all the way through the recession. We've continued to do a lot of capital improvements, so... But their principles were make fully informed decisions, be prudent, pursue alternatives, and protect basic assets first, and then where and how we build matters. And all of these are talked about in the report. I think they are all good things to consider, and they all have different implications as we go forward. That's all I have for today. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. It is online. If I didn't mention that already, it is in your packet. I think it is well worth reading, and it's still valid today, so.
Michael?
Brian and Mayor Kelly, I'd like to thank you for bringing this forward. I think it was really an excellent kind of presentation. It was sobering. I think it was intended to be sobering. But I think we need to realize, if we were in a different city, this wouldn't be a sobering discussion. It would be a depressing discussion. These things, I think, are still within our reach. So editorially, I guess I would slightly differ of an opinion with you, Brian. You said it's manageable if we're conservative. That's true, but it's also manageable if we're ambitious, but in a realistic fashion. I think we can actually reach realistically for the waterfront, for Lake Wacom. We shouldn't just be in a holding pattern. We should also be forward-thinking. What I really appreciate about both these documents is they were done under previous administration. When someone else, some other city, might have just looked inward, we also took time to look forward. And that's why these documents continue to be useful, I think, to us today.
Good point. Thanks, Michael. Mayor Kelly?
And I think I'd like to agree with Michael, because one of the first things I did was read some of these guidelines when I first became mayor, to see if there was some paths marked for what we should do. And I think that if Terry sat on this group, or whoever else did, you made some really good decisions. And it made my job, and I think Stan was on it, made my job as mayor and administrator easier because there were already some stated goals. The two things that I hope we get from what we got today, the easy one is the capital facilities, the capital budget, dealing with our capital facilities. When I first came, there was the list, and it's enormous, as you saw, almost $500 million. But we've been trying to look at actually things we want to be able to tick off the list so we can put more things on, kind of like the public programming on BTP-10. So we want to finish some things, and we also want to pay ahead. So that little bit that we can put ahead will add up over time so that we can meet the goal about how much do we need to put in the budget every year just to do our maintenance? Not the million dollars, not to do everything, but to make sure that we're not falling farther behind. So for me, not falling farther behind is one of my goals, and then being able to catch up as best we can. And so having that capital investment be considered not the piggy bank for doing new things is really important because it's going to come to call. And that's the part that I'd like us to all potentially make a commitment to is those capital things and the operating things, now that we're even, kind of even, not quite even, we can still do everything. I agree with Michael, actually, on the major commitments we make, we can do. Then we need to look at other new things we're talking about. One of the principles that I'm still having challenges with is the one that says, do your existing things first before you start new things. And I think probably every one of us has bent that one, so I'll take credit for bending it, too. But I think it's really important, because we've raised a lot of revenue to pay for new programs, and we don't have the revenue to pay for what we need to be doing now. So I'd like us, as we move forward, to consider both of those things, too. That we have, we've been paying for the new programs we wanted, and I think that's good. But we're not able to pay for the other things that we've obligated to do, and then that's a problem. So as the budget comes forward, let's think about that, too, especially as things come up for being redone. I mean, there's some things automatically that I think would be reauthorized, and maybe there's some things that we'd like to know a different way to meet that need. And we're not at the point of that yet, but we need to think about that going forward. So anyway, I appreciate you being patient. I know some of you have listened to this a billion times, and I know it can be boring, but we really do need to have this discussion as administration and council so that when we hit the budget, we're not like, oh, my gosh, why did that happen? Or me saying the same thing to you as you want to make some changes, so.
Thanks, Kelly. Terry?
Yeah. I do think the financial guidelines that we adopted and everything are very important. But I also think we have to remember the term guideline, that we try to adhere to these because these are very strong principles. But sometimes things come up. Council may come up with something at a certain time that they do want to initiate a new policy. It doesn't mean you can't do it, because these are just guidelines. And guidelines are meant to be a guide, but not chiseled in stone. So, you know, there is that room, but we need to look at that, and we need to look at other principles. And I think the other part is, is in looking at them in conjunction with other programs, not one separate. Yes, we can fund this, but what happens with, as, we have to look at it in a holistic manner when we're viewing them.
And that's kind of the point I was going to make. It isn't, because you have, when new things have come forward, they have been paid for, Terry, and I was not disputing that. But I do think sometimes when we want to do something new, we haven't added it up with all the other things just so we can make an informed decision. I think that was one of the principles, is make informed decisions so that you know all the facts, and then you have the opportunity to make a decision that you want to make. So I feel like part of that's my responsibility, to make sure you have all the information you need before you make important decisions that aren't just one-year decisions. Some of these are multi-year decisions, and we need to know how those all fit together.
Yeah, thank you.
So I'm agreeing with you, Terry.
One thing that really weighs on me is this, that we tend to push responsibilities into the future. And there were reasons for that during the downturn, of course, but like the maintenance on buildings and things starts to make me nervous, that that accumulates and then exponentially grows. For example, with facilities, it gets worse the more you're not staying on top of it. And I'm assuming we don't have a policy about that. I'm curious about that concept. But what I really want to talk about right now is, Brian, on one of your later slides, you said a recommendation was a long-term funding plan. And has this concept been initiated, and is it something we should explore in the finance committee in 2015 or anything?
Yeah. It has not been done comprehensively. At the time that the task force met, they looked at capacity, and as current debt fell off, that there would be additional capacity, it would be time to update it. There's things that should be updated and looked at again, and that would be a good thing to take on. I mentioned to Michael before, too, there are things that we accomplished on that list, and so it's not all bad news, certainly. It's things that have done. But we've also continued on with the things that were anticipated in 2010. So basically, it just would be updating for all of the things that have taken place in the last four years. And a lot of that, we've issued more debt. We've done the wastewater treatment plant, and that's done and paid for now, or it's, you know, it's been funded. So it would be moving on and looking at other things. I think when you talk about the facilities, that's part of another ongoing effort now that Ted's working on. And it really has to do with the number of facilities that we have and how to repurpose the facilities. So the federal building's the first kind of domino in that, and then it's going to free up capacity that will ripple through. But we need to then shed some of those buildings that we have so that we can actually pare down the number, be more efficient, and then take better care of those facilities. So there's facilities now that we don't want to spend any more money on, but we're still in, and we're kind of trapped, and we just need to start on them.
Well, I'm asking, for example, next, we're going to have a presentation about Lake Wacom and funding for our response to the TMDL. It's a big part of that conversation. And maybe not an assumption, but a very clear opportunity is when one of our debt bonds is paid down and we have some access to some more money, we might put towards our Lake Wacom responsibilities. But not having a whole picture about what else would qualify for that money or what we, you know, what are our opportunity costs with that, kind of hamstrings us a little bit in that discussion.
I haven't seen what they're going to present, and I will see that with you. I think that's very wise. So it needs to be part of a larger conversation. The other presentations that I'm working on in the future will talk about what the mayor said about all of the debt and where we might have other capacity or where there might be future capacity. And you do need to look at it that way, because I think it's all coming from the same, you know, source of income. It might be called a different thing, and it's used for a different purpose. But we need to look at upcoming levies, the existing levies, and then the needs there. So all of that is a very good conversation.
Well, probably a long-term conversation as well.
Yeah. Terry said it best. I mean, it needs to be looked at holistically. So you need to take what we just saw and then apply it to the watershed conversation, and then that needs to be brought back into the total city finances.
Yeah. Terry, did you want to add?
Yeah. You had mentioned you being very concerned, looking out at the deferred maintenance on projects and things. The capital facilities task force saw that same thing and took that very seriously, because one of the top principles was to fix it first. Before going to build new facilities, make sure you do the maintenance on that which you have so they don't run down. And so that was one of the things we looked at and we discussed a whole lot about, because that was a concern and still is a concern.
Thank you. Okay, if there's an, oh, Kelly, did you want to, one last thing?
Well, I was just going to follow up with what Terry's saying. That's one reason why we're investing in the federal building, because we have that building. I mean, that's not one we can surplus. But we can surplus the municipal court building. And so there is a long-term strategy, if you're looking at what we're going to keep, what we're going to invest in and repair, and what we're not, and what we would like to surplus. So I think that that's what we started doing, and we want to continue to do that. But I also think that there is that ongoing maintenance that, I think our goal, what did you say? Our goal was $1 million a year that we set aside. We don't have $1 million a year right now we can set aside. But that is, that should be a goal, and hopefully in the upcoming budget, that would be something that we're going to figure out how to propose. So that we're, even if we don't do $1 million in the first year, maybe we can do $1 million by the end of the biennium. So we're not going to solve all these problems with one biennium. But we're, hopefully, you'll be able to hold me accountable for going in the right direction.
Sounds good to me. Thank you.
Excellent. Sounds good to Brian.
Okay. Thank you so much. Excellent presentation today. Appreciate it. And we're going to move into our last information-only presentation here for committee of the whole today before executive session. This is a Lake Wacom watershed total maximum daily load, otherwise known as TMDL phosphorus reduction target presentation. Costs and funding for reducing phosphorus loads to Lake Wacom have been the topic of three recent Lake Wacom joint policy group meetings. At, I guess, my request, a summary of these discussions is being presented to council, and then council will consider expected costs for achieving the TMDL mandates and timeframes for reaching phosphorus reduction goals, as well as available and prospective sources of funding. So a great segue into this conversation was that last finance presentation, and I'll turn it over to John Hutchings.
Yes. Is my mic on?
Nope.
Nope. Now it is.
Now it is.
Wonderful. Yeah, it really is a good segue. And my job today is to summarize for you the conversation that we've been having over the last three months or so at the Lake Wacom Policy Group. And it, starting with the end in mind is always a good thing, and that's really what this group has been talking about, asking questions about, particularly the financial aspects of commitments to this long-term addressing of the phosphorus loading problem with Lake Wacom. And what I think would be a great way to start this conversation is beginning it where we are today. And in order to get that message across, Bill Riley has prepared this graphic that you see now on the screen, and we'll comment just quickly about that.
Yes, and so as John's saying, we don't want you to leave here thinking that, that, you know, we have all this work to do. A lot of the work that has to be done is in the county, and that, you know, within the city of Bellingham, we have a pretty good handle on what things are going. So this graphic here is meant to kind of convey the level of treatment that we have for different areas. And I don't know how well that, how effective it is, but the levels of green there, those are all of our existing facilities. And the darker the shade of green, the higher the percentage of treatment that we have achieved. The, say like this area right here, that's a 50% treated area. And darker areas, I mean, and this is a, this is 100% treatment area.
Bill, when you say 50%, you mean that's the amount of phosphorus that's being reduced and prevented from running off?
Yes. We've achieved 50% of the removal for that area. The blue is projects that we have. They're going to be happening between now and 2018. And so you can see there are a substantial amount of the projects that are going to get us ever closer to our compliance, the city's compliance, with our portion of the TMDL within our city limits, anyway.
Bill, could you point out where Bloedel Donovan is on that? Thank you.
Here's Bloedel Donovan, and that blue is the project that we're going to be doing this year. And maybe I can just sort of quickly summarize some of these. So Bloedel Donovan, that's a $512,000 project. 384 is paid by ecology, and that's going to be in 2014. 384 is paid by ecology, and that's going to be in 2014 here. This one over here is North Shore, that's going to be done this year as well. That's a $500,000 project, 375,000 of it by, from an ecology grant. This project up here, that's representing, along with some of the blue area going down here, is the Academy Road Joint Project that is underway. That's tentatively, it's about $850,000 from each jurisdiction to accomplish that project, and that's scheduled for 2015, 2016. And then we have Shepherds and Huntington, also in this area, that's scheduled for next year, 2015, it will be constructed, and that was, that's a $432,000 grant project that, no match from the city. This here is representing a project that we have at a piece of property on Oregon Street that's going to treat that area and some of the area out into the county. And then one project that I might bring to your attention, and it's a fairly small one, but this greater green area is all associated with our Park Place Stormwater Facility, and we have a project that is looking to, and that facility is actually located about here, and that project is, we're looking at improving the removal rate for that project by doing an oxygenation of the basin and providing some treatment to, sort of like what we do with our water treatment plant, actually injecting alum into it to facilitate the coagulation of sediments and materials that are in the water. So that one is for an existing facility, but that facility has a very wide area, and that is to improve the percentage of phosphorus removal. One of the things that I want to point out is there are some notable gaps, and if you look along the shoreline, I mean, we have very few projects, we have a few HIP projects that actually occurred there, but not very many. And as we get into this, one of the things that we will, one of the projects that we have on the going forward is the continuation of residential retrofits that we're proposing, just like Councilmember Liliquis indicated, that we're going to be continuing that program into the future, at least it's proposed to do so. And to get to all of those properties at the level of contribution that we've done for the HIP program, that's about an $800,000 project in and of itself. So if you have questions, we can come back to that.
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah, that's perfect. That really does set the stage that, you know, the concept of knowing where you're starting from. You know, we are spending on the order of $5 to $7 million a year on Lake Watcom Management Program investments, everything from the AIS program, land acquisition, and the capital side. And so far, those investments, the phosphorus reduction side of those investments have resulted in about a 10% reduction in phosphorus loading to date. So we're not beginning on this five-year plan from zero. We're beginning fairly far along in the process, or reasonably far along in the process, and with quite a body of information that has been, and knowledge that has been gained through the years. So the work that the Policy Group accomplished over the course of the last three or four meetings was really focused on the finances and prospective revenues for achieving the rest of those reductions over the course of the next 25, 30, 40, 50-year planning horizon. And of course, we've been given a drop-dead, if you will, planning horizon of about 50 years from the Department of Ecology. We don't know exactly when that begins. We don't know a lot about how we get there, but we do know a lot of, we do have a lot of information that we've garnered up through delivering these projects, these capital projects, and other phosphorus reduction solutions over the years. And in the laying out of all of that through the Policy Group meetings, the principal conclusions from those conversations were that the total cost of compliance with this TMDL mandate really depends on that mix of phosphorus reduction methods that are deployed and the rate of delivering those projects. But estimated for planning purposes, long-term planning purposes, that over 50 years or so, that would cost on the order of $100 million, and those are the numbers that have to stick in our head. Also, that sufficient revenues are currently available to advance our phosphorus reduction investments at that longest-term planning horizon, but only if we rely on the grant, the state and federal grant sort of model that we have in the past. And the policymakers have been real clear that they would like secured local revenues rather than relying on the uncertainty of grant dollars, and that those would somehow be contributed equitably by the participating governments to finance that 50-year TMDL planning horizon, and that the policymakers prefer a more aggressive alternative that leverages the state and federal funds against local revenue, something that would result in a more aggressive, perhaps 40-year or less, planning horizon. The decision point in all this is really less about when we achieve the TMDL and more about how much change we can make in phosphorus loading over the course of the next five to 10 years, right? We can plan to do things over five to 10 years, and that gets laid out in this regularly updated five-year Lake Watcom Management Program Plan. And we're intending to begin that, would like to begin that this fall, and in fact, have, on the Policy Group's agenda for this September 15 meeting is the process by which we might accomplish that planning, and of course, how we're going to do the public outreach and the like. In order for us to be successful with that, we really do need to have a good understanding of the expectations of the various policymakers that are involved in this conversation. And I think the outcome of this discussion about financing and the like is that there really are three kinds of options, three orders of magnitude of options. The first is which, the first of which is sort of status quo. That is, we are looking at delivering these projects about $2 million a year, relying on grant dollars to get us over the hump. The second is by reprioritizing existing expenditures, and we've had quite a bit of conversation in the Policy Group meetings about what options there are to do that, and the county along the way stepped up with a real clear statement of its intent to make up the difference in what might be contemplated in equity, anyway, over the next few years of funding. And then the outlier in all this, of course, is new revenues, and that's always a real difficult conversation. So let me just summarize and wrap this up by recognizing that, at the last meeting, we revisited the question, we, the policymakers included, revisited the question of what the appropriate trajectory is for delivering this work, and ultimately, what the best array of financing opportunities there are out there, and concluded that certainly there's a desire to be more aggressive than do simply the minimum amount of work, and that there's a reasonable prospect or a high level of, certainty is the wrong word, but a high level of commitment to being aggressive, to reprioritizing some of those finances or revenues to something that looks more like achieving these goals along, in the order of 40 years or so, and there were some discussions about doing something even more aggressive that would likely result in a need for new revenues. And that, I think, wraps up fairly well the conversations we had. The next steps are that, as I mentioned, the group is scheduled to weigh in on the planning process on the 15th of September, and then there has been some conversation among policymakers about the need for a resolution that might lay out some guidelines or some mechanism for laying these guidelines out that will help us contain the discussion around the five-year planning process, so that we know what your expectations are at the beginning of the process rather than learning at the end. And certainly, the staff is willing to work with council members and the committee members on whatever the appropriate mechanism is to convey that. That was a mouthful.
That's great. Okay, thank you. Any questions or discussion? Jack, first?
So John, in your discussions with, in the Policy Group and with the county staff and with the county council, is it their understanding that their goal is to match dollar-for-dollar what the city's investing in the TMDL approach?
I think the, at this point in the, in the planning process, recognizing that there's so much uncertainty what happens 10 years, 20 years, 30 years out in terms of what kinds of investments get made and where the priorities lie, so on and so forth, I think it's premature, and I think we all agree that it's premature to get too far down into the details, say, a dollar-for-dollar sort of comparison. But I think the commitment is that there be, absolutely be some level, reasonable level of parity in the overall process of investing in these solutions. So the answer to your question is no.
Yeah, Jack, I-
Dollar-for-dollar, there are a lot of other considerations associated with that, but in general, and the county has demonstrated its commitment to that equity, if you will, by making the commitment to invest an additional $350,000 a year, starting in its 2015 budget, and the executive will be putting that forward to the county council this fall.
That's 350, not 300? I thought it was 300.
Bill's telling me it's 300, and I think that sounds right. Yes.
Jack, I'd ask pretty much the same question. Like, is there any clear understanding amongst our jurisdictions that we're going to be doing this 50/50 essentially? But no?
Can I make an editorial comment?
Yeah, yes, go ahead.
So I see this map, and I look and see that at least the city's trying. You know, it's not perfect, but it's certainly getting there, and we're doing a really, I think, a really good job for this stage of where we are in this TMDL process. I would be fascinated to see a comparable map of the, you know, this represents 1,500 homes, and I'd be really interested to see a comparable map of the unincorporated area of the watershed that represents the rest of the, you know, the county, the unincorporated area of the county. You know, the county's done some pretty good job of dealing with Cable Street, you know, really good stormwater project there. They've done the reconveyance, they've done some other projects, they've helped with some of the stuff up in Hillsdale. But I really am concerned about the fact that previous decisions by the county council in zoning and allowing the building permit process to go for the last 25 years the way it has. We've had a Lake Louise interceptor that was very essential to put in to be able to deal with the sewage overflows that were happening with the, at the time was Water District 10. And unfortunately, what happened was that there was a decision to oversize that interceptor, that sewer line, to, in order to help pay for it. And, but through that, you know, through that oversizing, what that did was allow for a tremendous, hundreds and hundreds of additional homes in that area, which was then putting additional loading, phosphorus loading on the lake. You know, and that was a combination of two jurisdictions kind of working in tandem, unfortunately not to the right ends when we look at it in retrospect. But I bring all of that up, and I also look in terms of what the, you know, even what the current practices are right now. Last year, I talked with Ted about this, and Ted, you managed to go and correct this fairly fast, but the county was on Austin Street, hadn't even done any street sweeping there for the entire year. And, you know, I don't know whether or not the, you know, the filtration units were even being replaced within the stormwater catchment basins. But, you know, the whole street wasn't even being swept, and that was a fairly critical street, because it's got lots of surface area, is a direct shot down to the lake, it was getting quite a bit of leaf debris, which, from what we know, is a source of phosphorus. And so the maintenance wasn't even being done in the county, and that was really a concern to me. So, you know, I guess, just kind of wrapping up, I see that the fact that, you know, we're spending $850,000 a year from the city's perspective to deal with our 15% of area in the watershed, or the 23% of the units that, the housing units that exist in here, if we were to extrapolate that to the entire watershed, our $850,000, if it was matched dollar-for-dollar per area, you know, if it was 15%, that would be equivalent to $4.8 million that the county would have to be putting forward every single year to our $850,000. If we were going to look at it on a per cap, or, you know, per-unit basis, on a per capita basis, then it would be more like $2.8 million to our $850,000 a year. So I want to put that out there. I'm not going to make any friends across the street, but I think, but I think that the issue is, is that, you know, let's get real about the fact that we have made very serious mistakes over the last few generations in the watershed. Everybody is responsible for this. We're trying to do our part, and again, I really am pleased to see this type of map, you know, as terms of us trying to address this. We have a long ways to go, but to think that if we're putting out $850,000, and yes, the county's going to kick in $300,000, it's still not enough. I don't think it's anywhere near enough for the county's contribution, and I think that they really need to be serious about all of the different other units that, you know, the housing units that have been put in there. You know, and it's, where's the 77% of their responsibility?
Roxanne?
After-
It's $300,000 additional dollars.
Right.
Not $300,000.
I know. That's, I understand that, and that puts them on, pretty much on par with what our contribution is right now. My point is, is that I feel like there is additional, there's an additional financial contribution that I believe that the county or the entities that work within the county, whether it's Southern Valley, whether it's the Water District, you know, or all of the water districts, there's other responsibilities.
And we have, we have some other information, but I interrupted Roxanne, and I didn't mean to. So when she's done.
Roxanne, and then Terry, and then Mayor, and then Bill.
Just after serving on this Policy Group, I think the sharper thing for us to focus on is the dollar amount per year that we will need to spend to do the phosphorus reduction. And then let's join with the partnerships with our surrounding jurisdictions to figure out what the plan is going to be for that, rather than trying to put, draw lines in the sand about 50/50, you know, any other fractionation. Because fundamentally, so much of this is really up in the air. I mean, we might find that there are going to be technology improvements that are going to create cost reduction over the first, you know, 20 years of this. We might find that our homeowner incentive program is so effective that that could- is so effective that that could create cost reduction. There may be circumstances where the financial structures in the county will be stronger because of the way that they're set up, that they could pitch in more money. That's what the policy group was really aimed at, was trying to figure out what the dollar amount is that we can go forward with to create more local financing ability. And then, anything that we get on top of that will just create even more improvements for the phosphorus reduction.
Thanks, Roxanne. Kelly?
Yeah, you know, looking at a lot of this, it's, I do get really kind of overwhelmed a little bit in terms of what possible costs are and the hit, and the possible hits to our, our taxpayers. You know, the city, I mean, when you look at what we're asking already, in terms of we, you know, put in place through some long battles, the Storm and Surface Water Utility, and it didn't come easy, but we put that in place, and it's a pretty aggressive program, and tax on, on property owners. And we put that in place. And then we put in place two different increases for the, for the land acquisition and other programs. The county's program, the flood tax, is also on all of our residents, you know, it, it looks like it comes out of the counties. But again, it's on the city's residents, as well as county residents, all going towards that. When you start adding it up, of how much in terms of each of the, the taxpayers, or particularly property owners and, on it, you know, we're already hitting pretty hard on it. And there's a lot of people that are just really scraping by right now, and trying to look at this, how we can do this without pricing people, I mean, there's a limit in terms of how much we can go back and say, citizens, you've got to do this. So, we've got to do some really creative ways, and we got to do, we do have to get other jurisdictions stepping up to the plate to make this work. Because we can't just keep going back to that same well, because that well's pretty low.
Mayor Kelly?
Well, just, just so you know, the conversations that I have with the county executive have to do with everybody paying their fair share. Does that mean everybody pays their fair share this minute? Maybe not. But I'm pretty pleased that, that since Jack's been county executive, and you've all been on the council, and the county council has changed leadership, that there is a cooperation going on now between the Sewer and Water District, the county and the city, that wasn't happening, at least in my observation, before. So, I think we're in a great chance for that Lake Louise thing maybe not to happen again. So anyway, I, I just wanted you to know that. And also, John has more information on this, but, you know, the county's invited Southern Valley into the mix. Now, Southern Valley is, I think, the next biggest, or is it Geneva, one of the two, has the most residences that are contributing to the phosphorus loading in the lake. So, I think getting those two areas in there will be very important. I mean, Geneva needs to come, too, because they have the same conditions as we have in Silver Beach, and they happen to be out in, outside the city limits. So, so I'm, I'm feeling better, Jack, not worse, than when I started working on this 15 years ago. I think there's more cooperation, there's more understanding, there's more, obviously more commitment than there was before. And I do think Terry's right, that we're hitting, we're hitting some of the limits. So, that's why it's important to look at all the different assessments we put on people, and see if Lake Watcom comes before that, you know, or after that. And there, there is a way to capture more county residents in the acquisition and through our, through our sewer assessment. And that could be something that we could represent to you. And you could, you could see that that is also an option that had been brought up originally when we talked about the rate increase, but we could bring it up again.
Bill had something to add.
Well, I was, I was just going to say that, that this process is, as, as you know that have been in going to the policy group meetings, is, is that it's been a, it's, it's been long, and it, and it's been a give and take from people. I wanted to point out that when we first started on this process, that there, we were very much, it was, it was, it was evident that the city was not contributing as much as, as Watcom County at that given point in time. And that's when, when the county decided to step up with this, not only an additional $300,000 to create equity, but also to make that, that, their, the money that they were contributing on an annual basis to, to make that harder, so that they, they were committing long-term to having that level of funding. So, that, it was a, it was a substantial change that occurred at that. To the equity situation, we have looked at the equity situation, and it's very difficult, it's a very difficult question. The city of Bellingham, you know, we, we are the keepers of the watershed, and we are the ones that have, it's our water source. So, I mean, there's, you have to figure out, it's, it's not just money, but it's also who benefits most from having a clean lake. I think that it's, I think it's really important for, for us to do as much as we can. But at the same time, I think it's much, it's, it's better if we can achieve some kind of equity between the two.
Yeah. Thanks, Bill. I'm just going to add real quickly, and then I'll call on you two. At our last couple of meetings, Carl Wymer in particular, and Ken Mann has also referenced this, but the county is trying to work on a larger water action plan, of course, for all of their water priorities. And given that, they have a lot of competing financial obligations regarding water solutions. And so, I think that doesn't change our, the nature of what we want from the county, but it might, it's just information to take into account as we have our, our conversation with them.
Jack, and then Michael.
So, I, I wanted to just acknowledge, Kelly, you're right, in the sense that both the county, the Water District, Water and Sewer District, and Southern Valley, all are stepping up to, to the, to the mark. And they're really doing a very good job of, of understanding the problem, and they really are contributing. I, I wanted to make sure that I acknowledge the fact that they're doing that. But I also look at the, the, this is my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, John, is that the TMDL has nothing to do with whoever's extracting water from the watershed for drinking water. It has to do with the fact that it's an impaired body of, it's an impaired body of water, and that it needs to be brought to, you know, to a level where it's, it's going to be safe, you know, and sustainable. And it has nothing to do with the fact that the city, you know, is servicing, you know, the 90-year, 100,000 customers for drinking water. It's just, who's polluting? How does it get fixed? And that's why I was making the comments that I was making, was that if we look at it in that, that sense, yes, we have a responsibility to try and make sure the lake's clean, because we're drinking it. But at the same time, there is a legal responsibility under the TMDL for all parties to be trying to fix this, this particular mess that we've gotten ourselves into. And I think that that needs to be considered when we have these discussions. You know, I, I look, you know, I look at what, what was going on with, with the, again, the, the Water and Sewer District. I used to, I used to own property in the Geneva neighborhood, and when that, when I was, when I was living in it, I was paying the surcharge that, that the city council wisely went and imposed back in the early 2000s. And I paid it until the, till the district ended up suing successfully, so that they didn't have to go and pay it. And so, they stopped paying it. They stopped contributing to, to, you know, to the purchase of, of additional property in the watershed. The funny thing is, is that the people, the customer base, never got a refund of, of any of those monies that were collected for the surcharge, nor, and I found this out, was that the, that money never was actually remitted over to the city for purchase of, of property. I think that, you know, we have to, I, I, there's been past issues that I feel like need to be put into this, this equation. And I, you know, I bring it up only because as, as the executive, county executive is starting to look at this, or as the junior districts are starting to look at this in, in a more equitable way. And I think that there is, it needs to be equitable. I think it's important to understand that the TMDL has nothing to do with the city's water supply. We have a 15% stake in this. We're paying 50%. You know, even, even in the best case, we're paying 50%, but we have been paying even more in, in the, you know, in the recent past. And I think, I, I just want to go and put that on record. Not to, I, I don't want to go and throw stones at all of the good things that have been going on in the last few years, but as we lay out expectations over these next few years, I would like to understand that everybody understands, you know, those basic premises.
Mr. Jack? And Michael?
I know we're talking about this at length, but I'm, I think it's important enough that we should talk about it at length. I would like to tie my comments now back to the previous agenda item, which had to do with the big financial picture, capital use planning, principles of which we do long-range planning. And the point I made then is, I think it's also possible to be ambitious, as long as we're realistic in setting our goals. I said that, maybe I wasn't thinking of the time, but I mean, that's exact, this, Lake Watcom is exactly the sort of situation where I think we need to be ambitious and reach as far as we can, and it's realistic. Also, going back to the principles of guiding our financial decisions, we need to take care of existing obligations, is one of those principles. Well, Lake Watcom is as much a pre-existing obligation as our, you know, repaving our streets. It's a pre-existing condition. It's one of those fix-it-first items in my mind. It's, the lake is broken, it needs fixing. So, I think that's why the kind of pay-now-or-you'll-pay-later principle that applies to our, you know, buildings that we own, I, I think it also applies to Lake Watcom. So, I, I think it does rise into the first tier of our spending. Roxanne, you said, let's, let's pay attention to the, the overall annual numbers. I think that's a really good thing. According to the document, we have been spending about 1.8 million annually. That'll go up to 2.1 at least next year, to hit our 50-year, kind of like-
Not necessarily.
Well, if the county approves the $300 bump, $300,000 bump.
Okay, if we continue to get grant funding.
Yeah. Well, so let me just keep going. These are round numbers. 2.3 million is more like the number we would need to hit. So, it sounds like they're going to harder and harder, because if we actually wanted to do more like the 30-year timeframe, which would be my preference, now it's $3.8 million annually. And that seems really, really big, right? And we've just been, you know, shown the larger picture. Well, I still think we should put that in perspective, because $3.8 million is not that large compared to just a few city projects. It's a fraction of a major bridge. It's the ordinary amount we spend on, you know, some products around town. What we're spending now is a fraction of 1% of our overall budget for the city and the county combined, a fraction of 1%. And if we goose that up, if that goes up to the full 3.8, it's still less than 1% of the combined city and county budget. So, yes, it's big, but it's not so big, considering the size of our larger government. So, I think, I think it's possible to reach that goal, but it will require trade-offs and prioritization, which was, I think, the intent or one of the lessons of the previous presentation. So, I'm still urging us to try to find, find a way to increase that number and accelerate that schedule.
Right. I appreciate that. Did you have something to add? Gene, okay.
Just real quick, I want to agree with both Jack and Terry. For those of us that have been up here for a while, it is hard to be drawn into a conversation and talk about equability when what we have done over the years, I mean, our ratepayers are paying a lot of fees. The county talks about the flood control, zone district, they've piled that fund up. I don't know how many million are in it now. I am fully in agreement with the mayor that it is time to work with the county. I'm glad that Jack Lous and the current county council are working with us. Their predecessors did not. They lectured us. They told it was our problem, and there's a little angst on that. But I know it's a new era, it's a new beginning. But, you know, it's, it's hard to sit here and listen to everything that has to be done, and how our citizens have footed the bill from a long time ago. So, I had to say that, because it's very hard to be drawn into equity when we have been spending millions of dollars acquiring land. We have spent millions of dollars on surface and stormwater. We've led the way, and now it just, you know, anyway, I just wanted to get that off my chest, so.
Thanks, Gene. Roxanne?
Well, I just would like to stay committed to the 40/50-year focus, because I would love to get so aggressive that we could do it in 30. That's without a doubt. But, the issue is, the uptick in the cost, if we go forward with our current funding ratios, the city's going to be funding that then. And so, where are we going to come up with that money? Now, we can get creative, we can try to get other financing streams into this, but I would rather go with the sure bet of the 40 to 50 years, because we know we have a better chance of guaranteeing those funding scenarios going forward, especially for the long term for these projects. And it's just going to be a better process to see how it goes in the future with these partnerships. And I just think that'll create more certainty for the communities, for the financing, and not having to go out and get more money out of the taxpayers' pockets. I want to ask two, or say two things. So, we're at 850,000 for the city, and when the county implements this new 300,000, they'll be at 950,000. So, we're very close, roughly equal-ish. They were behind us, now they're a little in front, maybe. But we're still 200,000 shy of our minimum annual commitment, in theory. And so, that's a conversation I imagine we'll be having about how to close that gap. It's not huge, and I bet we can do that. This is, of course, without grant funding, because our commitment is to meet the minimum obligation with no outside money. That way, any outside money just kind of buys us down from that long-term goal. So, when, John, do you think we're going to be having that conversation about filling that gap? And then I have another comment, too, after that.
Yeah, so that, that gets us back to this conversation about the purpose of, of this planning exercise that we intend to initiate in the fall. So, we would like to walk into that planning exercise with some sideboards established by, by the policymakers as part of this Lake Watcom management program. And I envision that those sideboards would be, go develop a plan for us to be able to invest in phosphorus reduction activities in the watershed in a manner that relies on this level of funding going forward. And of course, we have control, the administrations have control of some of those things, as in having conversations about reprioritizing dollars, about aggressively leveraging outside funding. The prospect of, of raising new revenues for these sorts of things is something that's a little bit, well, a lot more uncertain. And therefore, if that's, if that's really the intent of the councils, then everybody needs to know that upfront. And so, we're looking for some sideboards on planning, and those sideboards really find their way back into the process by saying, here's, here's a planning horizon. We would like you to go, go work up a set of, of-
Options.
Yes, options, and-
I'm helping.
You are helping. I'm running out of words here. Anyway, I think you get the point. Yeah.
So, in, in the fall, as you're putting together a five-year plan, we'll have some options about how to close that funding gap?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I, I mean, the bottom line is that we've, we've offered up some options, most of which address that funding gap right up front. And that the planning horizon we're talking about-
Okay.
...begins somewhere out towards 2019, right?
2019.
So, we put together this five-year plan, and we say, here's the dollars we've got already. And we know we're on a trajectory that is more aggressive already than the 50-year, than this 50-year horizon. And then we're asking, how much more aggressive do we want to get?
Okay, great. Okay, my other thing, I just, crazy throwing this out there, but according to the policy group, there's some document about how we interact together as jurisdictions, where we have an annual joint policy meeting with the county every year. And it references the possibility to have two meetings, and not that anyone wants an extra meeting, and not that those have ever been the most productive meeting-
that those have ever been the most productive meeting we've been to. But, that being said, it might be interesting to ask the county to present their water, their countywide water plan to us at a meeting like that, so that we can have an understanding of the vast problems they're dealing with and couch Lake Watcom with that, you know, larger picture. So anyway, just an idea, we can think about that. Oh, okay. All right. Okay. Anyway, if there's nothing else to add, we'll move into executive session. I want to say thank you very much to staff and...
Do we have old?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, we've got some other things first, too, yeah. Thank you very much, great presentation, appreciate it. Okay, we've got minutes to approve an old and new business, and then we'll move into executive session. So I'll say July 7th, we've got committee meeting minutes, and for a special meeting that day, July 7th as well.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I was not there, but I can vote, and I'm going to, because I watched the video. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, minutes passed 7-0. Any old or new business? Terry?
Yeah, at the end of our last meeting, sometime late into the night, we started having a discussion about public comment and about possibly setting limits on the time that we allow speakers at the front part of the meeting, and if there's still speakers, about setting it over, so that we can actually get to the business of the citizens' business while we're still able to think. And thinking about that, there was one item, if we decide to discuss this further and move forward with it, that I was thinking about that we might want to also consider. And that would be, when we get the list of what people are going to talk about, that we move to the front of the list those individuals who want to address an item on our schedule for the evening. Because, not for a public hearing, but because that's their only opportunity to, you know, to do that. So I just thought I'd bring that up while I was thinking about it, because we wouldn't, I wouldn't want to, you know, cut out somebody who's going to address something, you know, wants to address something that we're going to discuss in the evening or we discussed earlier in the day, because I think that's probably one of our most important parts of that. So that was it for me, I just wanted to bring it up, and if we move that, because I would like to see that discussion, maybe let's move that way, because letting it run for an hour and a half of public hearing, of public comment, or, when we've got three hearings going.
Right. Jean?
I think it's a good idea. We've done it in the past, and then we kind of forget about it, but it looked like tonight we have three public hearings, and I've been watching some of the chatter on the internet, and there's going to be a lot of public comment tonight, so it's a wise thing to do.
So is that a change in our procedure?
You always have the discretion, when there's more than one public hearing, to say, folks, we're going to...
That's true.
Go to 7:15 or 7:30, and then we're going to come back to it after we get over the public hearing. You have that, you can do that already.
So I guess I'll think about that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Separate item?
Separate item, yeah.
Yeah. The mayor unfortunately left briefly, but I, one of the things I noticed that we had talked about at this time in our last meeting was that we received a report from the chief of police about the fireworks issue, but we were supposed to discuss it at this meeting, and it's not on the agenda.
Oh, yeah.
So it would be nice if we, maybe for August 4th, that we can get it on the agenda so that there could be a discussion about what went right, what went wrong.
Brad Heinrich, Mayor's office. Yeah, we can certainly do that. We'll bring it back on the 4th. And I guess a question for you is in the Public Works Public Safety Committee, or would you like that Committee of the Whole?
Depends if the rest of the council wants to hear it.
Well, they can feel free to attend the meeting.
Where? Okay. Okay. We'll start into the committee then? Okay.
Thanks, Jack. Michael?
Nine o'clock.
Oh, did you have more?
No, it's nine o'clock in the morning.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe, maybe.
Maybe, maybe not.
Yeah, maybe not. If it's the only item, we might bump it, yeah. Michael?
Yeah, under new business, I have presented people with a draft letter that I would like the rest of the council to consider sending. It has to do with the fact that one-third of our electrical power actually comes from coal, and most people don't realize that. And coal power is being retired and phased out in the region, and this asks PSC to go one step further. What I'd like to do right now is make a motion simply to move this forward to our next meeting for the Committee of the Whole for discussion. I want to introduce it now, but my motion is to send it to the Committee of the Whole at our next meeting.
Second. Okay, great, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this letter? And sending it to committee for discussion at our next meeting? Pinky?
I just wanted to comment that I am going to have to recuse myself from any discussion that has to do with PSC, because they are my employer. And if anyone wishes to discuss that with me at a PSC-related time, they are open to do so.
Great, thank you.
Kathy?
Yes, Michael?
Point of information on that, Ellen, I don't believe she actually needs to quote "recuse" herself, but maybe abstain is enough. Recuse means you've got to, like, leave the room and stuff. Can she just abstain from voting on those matters to remove any kind of awkwardness and conflict?
I think the best thing would be to recuse herself and actually leave the room. I mean, I could look at the other option, but that's typically, if somebody has a conflict of interest, that's what they do.
Okay. All those in favor of referring this letter to Committee of the Whole at our next meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions?
One abstention.
Okay, motion passes 6-0 with Vargas abstaining. Roxanne?
I just wanted to provide a little report that Kathy, Michael, myself, and with the mayor on the phone, last week traveled down to Seattle for the Leadership Alliance Against Coal. And so this was a great meeting of some 40 elected leaders, all the way from Montana and Oregon and Canada, and up and down the I-5 corridor, Spokane too. And so this just gave us good hope that we can work together as a body, and additional people who couldn't make it, to really help deal with the issues that we face with coal. Also, it gave us great hope, because everyone agreed, we are now going to become an alliance against coal, and we want to work on oil issues. So if any community member would like more information about what we're doing with that, please feel free to contact any of us that I mentioned, and we'd be happy to give more information on that. Also, just one more quick reminder that for everybody, ballots will be arriving soon. So I just want to remind everybody to vote in the August 5th primary election.
Great, thank you Roxanne. Okay, any other old or new business? Seeing none, we'll adjourn to executive session. Executive sessions are closed to the public. I will give a report at the regular meeting this evening. A governing body may hold an executive session only for specified purposes, which are identified in RCW 42.30. We have seven items this afternoon that will last approximately one hour. I know, have fun. And we will reconvene at approximately 4:40. First item is litigation Nash versus City of Bellingham. Second is litigation Newland versus Suce et al. Third is potential litigation. Fourth, potential property acquisition. Fifth, potential property acquisition. Sixth, personnel. Seven, potential property acquisition. And again, we'll reconvene in approximately an hour at about 4:40. Thank you.